But we're at the time of the year when we can expect to start seeing an increase in your theft from autos and people trying on car doors and people being out and about. So now is a good time to remind everybody, you know, make sure you lock your car doors, make sure you don't leave any valuables in your car, especially don't leave your key fobs inside of a car. I can't tell you how many meetings I go to on a countywide basis now where we're hearing like upwards of ninety to ninety-five percent of all of our stolen cars are because somebody left a key fob either in that car or like left a key fob for another car in their one car, but that other car like, you know, a few feet away. So we, I think we've done a really good job, or you all have done a really good job in the village of, you know, securing your vehicles, you know, compared to other areas in the county, like we don't have the same level of theft from cars, but we do have it and it doesn't take much to really, you know, one person to find a few cars and, you know, numbers are back up again. So that's really it. Um, you know, the world of COVID is kind of always changing things and, you know, a new guidance came out today that's requiring premise face masks every time you're out of the house when conducting essential business. Um, so, you know, well, as far as the police go, we're not like actively, you know, we're not stopping people driving around, seeing what their businesses are, what the business, what they're out for. If you have, you have a complaint about some business or whatever, not using proper mask regulations, like call 311, that those are actually being investigated and handled by our Department of Health. Um, you know, police aren't taking the active role in that enforcement component. But really a lot of it has been kind of, you know, learning along the way and then being adaptable. So that's kind of all I have to say, but if anybody has any questions, please, you know.
Yeah, yeah, right. Uh, we've had, we've had a few comments from residents about deliveries not showing up on their doorstep. Are we getting reports of thefts of deliveries?
So not, not to my knowledge in the village, um, you know, I think because there have been so many more, it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me if people are doing that more because like everything's being driven package wise, right? I mean, you know, there's so much, it's almost like four or something Christmas time, there's so many more packages being delivered, um, because you can't go to retail shops. I haven't heard in the village an increase in package theft, and I haven't really heard it countywide even. Um, what I do know is what normally would take like three or four days to show up takes one or two weeks now because of so much volume.
Right.
Um, so I haven't heard of theft, of an increase in theft, but what I'd say is, you know, if you think about it, like even though packages are high, are higher volume, everyone's also home to collect their packages. So, um, it's a long way of saying I haven't heard that, but it wouldn't necessarily surprise me.
Right. Okay, just checking.
Nick, it's Tiffany. So I have two, two things.
Hey Tiffany.
One, um, thank you for still doing your job. And if you wouldn't mind just passing on from us, like we, we appreciate that, you know, police officers are essential employees and they're all working.
All right.
So then the, the second thing, uh, maybe a newsletter reminder, since we've got one going out on the twenty-seventh of April, you guys have written like lock your car reminders in the past. Maybe we could have another like, hey, it's springtime reminder from you guys.
Totally. Yeah, it's, it's a good point. I will, uh, I'll save an old one, I'll, I'll freshen it up a little bit and I'll, I'll send it back, I'll send it to Niles to put out.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else for Nick before he goes?
No. All right.
Okay. Thanks, Nick. All right.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone, please, everybody, stay safe and healthy. Uh, I'll see y'all soon.
Yeah, take care. Um, all right, committee updates. Uh, we got a note from our tree supervisor, Paula Goldberg. Um, not, not much going on with the trees right now. She did ask that we check in on the status of the 2019 Tree City USA award, so Niles will look into that in the coming days. The community engagement committee had a, a recent meeting just to see, you know, how could it support the election committee, even though we didn't look like at the time and now we're definitely not doing the election in person. So they, they're rolling along for their stuff. The ethics committee, don't see anybody on here. And then, uh, elections. So Marty, I saved, I saved the detailed one for last. Are you ready?
Oh, we might be trying to do, Marty, let me unmute, okay, no, there, we're good.
Are we good?
Yes.
Now we're good. Okay. Tiffany, thank you for allowing us some time because just like last month, this is going to take a little while, so lots of pieces here, lots of moving pieces on any election, but especially this year. And I want to just start out by saying that we really, the entire committee, especially me, um, appreciate the very capable assistance from Niles. Um, our new village manager has really stepped up and I just want to put on the record, he's done a great job on a whole bunch of fast turnaround staff support work that we've needed here, because it's a real challenge conducting this election in the middle of the pandemic. And Niles, I want to commend you and thank you publicly. Um, it's been terrific. Okay, now to the report, and again, thanks for the time here. We met, uh, the committee met by Zoom on Sunday evening, April fifth, some of the council members attended and thank you for that. In our report for this meeting, we'll attach the notice that we posted on April tenth, talking about that. Anyway, we set the election date as May fifteenth in keeping with the charter, which was a mercy for us all. Um, and with elections by mail, of course, it's a voting period rather than a single date. Our voting period will run from April twenty-seventh, which is when we expect residents to begin to receive their ballots in the mail through May fifteenth. Ballots must be postmarked by May fifteenth and must be received at the election processing center by May twenty-second in order to be counted. Um, and they will be tracked because we were concerned about, you know, postal delivery with the pandemic. All right. At the March nineteenth council meeting, we'd asked the council to reschedule the election to June because we were so worried about how we'd do this online or by mail. I mean, we just had a really, a lot of research to do. And we said back then that at a minimum, the committee would act on its own authority under the charter to move the election date back to at least, um, one week later, May, from May seventh to May fourteenth. Um, and the council decided not to change the election in June, which turned out that we could do it in May. So in the meantime, we adopted the May fourteenth date as an interim measure. And of course, one of the things that happens from that, per the election ordinance here in the village, is that if you move the election date, the candidate filing date, which is tied to the election date, also moves back. So on, on that Monday morning, the twenty-third of March, we posted a notice saying that the filing date was moved back to March thirtieth. And we've now got four candidates running for the council this year, two of whom filed on March thirtieth. Um, Arthur Alexander, hi Arthur, Jeff Lander, Monty Boland, and Susan Fattig, hi Susan. So it's, it's good to have an election with four candidates. We're very pleased that that worked out well. All right, then back to the nitty gritty and the mechanics of this. As I think you all know, the committee investigated a whole range of online and mail voting options and recommended that the council authorize, today we're recommending, we've recommended that the, the council authorized the election committee to conduct the 2020 election by mail. That turned out to be the best option. The electronic voting options really looked promising at first, but you know, we dug down into them, your committee is nothing if not thorough, and it didn't turn out that they were workable. So we consulted election officials in other towns, we looked into all kinds of firms that provide vote by mail election support services. Yeah, question? Oh, okay. Um, we did a lot of detailed interviews and reference checks, and we are recommending that the council hire Elektic, E-L-E-C-T-E-C. They're an experienced company, they, they currently handle the voting mechanics for Bowie, New Carrollton, Gaithersburg, County Chevy Chase, and a whole bunch of other local and county governments. So we're very confident that they will do a good job, and Niles has been working with them as our point man, um, on all the mechanics and details. So again, thank you, Niles, for stepping up there. All right, back to the committee. We approved the 2020 ballot, we prepared the official 2020, uh, election information packet, and Niles sent that out yesterday, April fifteenth, we made the deadline. It was sent online to every resident who's listed on the constant contact list, and Niles is mailing it to the households that currently receive the print edition of the news. So Niles, again, thank you for getting that out. Um, we had on the committee a lot of discussion about whether to keep the meet the candidates' community forum on Thursday, Thursday, as originally scheduled, or to move it closer to the election. We decided to keep it on the twenty-third, and we will conduct it safely with residents and candidates both participating by conference call in the Zoom audio video link. We'll post, uh, community announcements about exactly how to participate by Zoom, and we plan to post the forum afterwards on the, the village website. Now, Niles, we had a question for you there. Are we just going to be able to post the audio of the forum or both the audio and the video?
So per village policy, it's only the audio. So just like, just like the council meetings are only the audio.
Oh, okay. Um, if the committee wanted to also post the video, there'd be nothing to prohibit us from doing that separately.
We need to talk to our council about that, Marty.
Okay, that was the question, that's why I raised it. Um, anyway, thank you for putting the audio on, you know, that, that's good. The only question was, videos well or not? So thanks for looking into that. Okay, moving on, it's a long report, but getting there. Um, we recognize that the candidates, I mean, really none of them can really safely campaign as usual this year. I mean, usually people hold neighborhood wine and cheese or coffee events for the campaign, or they chat, you know, face to face at some length with their neighbors while they're walking around distributing their campaign materials, um, you know, door to door. And, you know, that's not entirely safe. Uh, we're not directing the candidates as to how to campaign, um, but we really hope they will explore safe online ways to do their outreach to voters this year. We're also offering one new election communication channel this year. Um, we invited all four candidates to provide campaign information in a special 2020 election section of the May issue of the newsletter, which is the one that comes out on April twenty-seventh. That's in addition to the community forum and their candidate statements in the election packet, which we normally do. And all four candidates, I'm pleased to report, have now agreed to participate, which means that we can actually do it. Um, the committee discussed the fact that we really couldn't do a special election section unless all the candidates participated, and they, they now have agreed to, so that's great. Um, the committee will format and assemble the new section, and Niles will include it in the newsletter, and that's, again, the May issue of the newsletter, scheduled to come out on April twenty-seventh, which is about when the ballots should start arriving in the mailbox. Okay. Um, community information, we will, of course, continue to post regular updates about the election on constant contact, we'll answer community questions, um, we'll continue to update the election information on the village websites, all that's in process. And we appreciate the council's fast action to approve the emergency resolutions contract with Elektic and the election procedures that we will need to conduct this election safely and fairly. We note for the record that the election committee did not discuss or, or request or recommend the language in Charter Resolution Number Two-O-Two-O-One, um, revising Section Two-O-Two of the village charter, which is presented for the council to vote on tonight. Similarly, we didn't discuss or approve or request or recommend the language in Section One-One of the ordinance that's up for vote tonight, Ordinance Two-O-Two-O- dash four dash one. The section in there about handling uncontested elections is new and is not something that the committee, uh, has discussed. We have reviewed as a committee, we've reviewed and approved the emergency plan for the 2020 village election, which is noted in Section One, uh, Point Two of Ordinance Twenty-Two-Two-Four-One. So, so we were really surprised when we saw those, those other items in the election packet, uh, or in the council packet, that, uh, rather, for this night, tonight's meeting. And, and, uh, I'd like to just discuss that for a moment. Um, the election committee didn't request any changes to the village charter. All we need is a temporary sixty-day emergency resolution that would allow us to conduct the election by mail. Um, that's all we asked for, and it would be exactly like the resolution the council approved in March, which would have allowed electronic voting. So we were quite surprised to see charter amendments. Um, the committees had no chance to even discuss the charter changes that are proposed here. The first time we saw this document was yesterday afternoon, when it kind of popped up out of the blue in the packet for the council meeting. Um, and for the council to suddenly change the charter's language about elections without even consulting the committee, well, it seems very strange. I, I've never seen that done before. Um, and there, there's, there's, so there's a question about process here, that it's not really a great idea in terms of good local government process to make changes in the election section of a charter without consulting your local experts, which is your election committee who's been doing this for years. But there's also concern, when I, when I read through it this afternoon, um, that it might also interfere with the firewall that we have had here in Martin's Dishes since day one, um, between the, the council and the actual day-to-day management of elections. The current charter gives the committee the authority to manage the village elections without any interference from the council members, and that's important, to make sure that we do have clean, open, fair elections. As I said, the language has been in the charter for many, many years. Um, and to the extent that the proposed new charter language, which the committee is just seeing for the first time, to the extent that the proposed change would allow the council to manage the village elections directly, that's not such a great idea. And we don't want to break that nice, clean firewall that we have now between the council and the management of the election process. Um, and, you know, again, this is not something the committee's had any chance to discuss because the first time we saw the document was yesterday afternoon, but I really don't see a need to make these charter changes right now. They're not necessary for the June, for the, for the 2020 election. Um, and just speaking personally here, as the longtime chair of the committee, I can't speak for the committee because we haven't read it yet, but I can speak personally because I have. Um, and as the longtime committee chair, I would strongly urge the council to just kind of step back and think of this through, to either hold off on voting on the charter resolution document tonight, uh, until you can have the benefit of the election committee's expertise and input, or at the very least, I would strongly recommend that you don't want to look like you're going to manage the elections. And if you want to avoid that appearance, uh, you could probably amend that document tonight, that's Charter Amendment Resolution Number Twenty-Two-Two-One. In the fourth paragraph of that document, if you all have it in front of you, paragraph that begins, "All elections shall be managed by the election committee," which is the language from the current charter. Um, you've added, someone has added, committee didn't add it, "or by a qualified election service provider, as determined by the council." And the downfall there is that it looks like the council is managing the elections through an election service provider. So I would recommend that you, if you want to adopt this document tonight, and again, it'd probably be better to wait and let the election committee advise you on it, but if you want to adopt it tonight, please, at the very least, add the phrase, after qualified election service provider, add the phrase supervised by the election committee. So it doesn't look like the council is running the elections. You want to discuss that for a minute, and then I've got one more point before we finish up.
No, I think we'll discuss when we get to the amendment. I would just say that all changes are being made pursuant to legal counsel, um, an executive order that was signed by the governor and consistent with many of our neighboring jurisdictions. So if you want to give us where your other area of concern was, then we can maybe have that part of our discussion later.
Yeah, okay, okay. Again, I would, I appreciate the governor's order gives you the flexibility to amend the charter, you know, basically, you know, in one meeting, um, which is, of course, very different from our normal charter amendments. My concern is that the way this is amended, it appears to authorize the council to manage elections, and it's really important to have that firewall. To have clean, open, fair elections, um, means that the council doesn't manage them directly, and, uh, that's longstanding and, and sort of standard good government and really pretty essential. So the language, as you have it there now, is problematic. I appreciate that Ron has reviewed it, but, um, it's problematic in that regard, that any election provider would have to be supervised by the committee, not by the council, which is why I would urge you to add that language after the phrase, "a qualified election service provider," add the phrase supervised by the election committee, um, as opposed to saying, "as determined by the council," which gives, I hope, a false impression that the council wants to start running elections. Um, so at least, you know, if you don't want to hold off on voting on it, again, I don't, I don't see any need to vote on charter changes tonight, other than that the governor gave you the opportunity to do it. But, um, if you don't want to hold off on voting on this, please at least amend the language so that it maintains that firewall between day-to-day management of elections and the council. Um, that's just a basic, clean government requirement. Um, on the second document, the, um, get up here, Ordinance Number Twenty-Two-Two- dash four dash one, the language there, if you go toward the end of it, um, in, where is it? I'm looking for it here. Where it talks about uncontested elections is Section One on the bottom of page two. Um, you know, the, the committee has, you know, discussed, approved, and worked with Nile on the emergency plan for the village election. That part's fine. Uh, the question came up, as we're reading this, it's about the uncontested election. We have no language in, in our ordinance that says that we can cancel the election if it's uncontested. I know that the village of Chevy Chase does that, but most people don't. And again, that's the kind of thing that really should be that it, through the, the, the election committee, you've got a whole panel now of experts who are experienced on the election committee, and I was very surprised to see that in the, the committee has had no chance to discuss that. It's not generally considered one of the best practices in election policy. Um, so the committee would like an opportunity to discuss that. It would be easy to amend this, um, Declaration of State of Emergency and Ordinance Twenty-Two-Two-Four- dash One, to simply delete that paragraph one about the uncontested elections and leave paragraph two, which is the one that we actually need to carry out this election. Any questions about that?
No, thank you.
Okay. And again, we appreciate your prompt response. We also think it's pretty important to follow process here and, um, make changes in election procedures with the expertise and, and advice of the committee rather than circumventing them. Um, so I appreciate you taking due process into consideration here, too. Uh, we were quite surprised to see those two items. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marty. Um, and I should note, while we're here in the election session, just, uh, Marty, Todd, as you may have seen, is now our council rep on your emails since Susan is a candidate.
You're breaking up, Tiffany, say that again.
So Todd is going to be now our, our council liaison to the election committee since Susan is a candidate, the nomination period having been closed, so, um, we just wanted to make sure that that, that change was documented in this meeting.
I think that's terrific. Welcome, Todd. Susan, you have been a wonderful liaison these many years. Todd, I'm sure you'll be just as wonderful. We look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you. I don't know if I could be as wonderful, Susan, but I'll do my best.
But you're up to it. All right. Um, Keith, you gonna save the weather for the end? You didn't, you didn't mention it earlier.
Well, I wanted to thank, um, Niles, he did such an excellent job disseminating information to the residents on Monday. That was a rather tense situation, but weather over the next few days, going through the weekend and the next week, will be rather benign. Uh, some rain tomorrow night into early Saturday, and then the rest of the weekend looks very nice. Uh, going into May, um, it looks like temperatures are going to actually be a little cooler than normal, which is nice, in the sixties and, um, our normal by the time we get up to May first is around seventy. So we've got some, uh, nice weather ahead, not real warm, but, uh, still quite pleasant.
Okay.
And that's it. And I, and I thank you.
All right, thanks, Keith.
You're welcome.
Okay, Doug, we're at the building administrators' report.
Uh, good evening, this is Doug Lohmeyer. Uh, just wanted to let the council know that I'm still riding through the village, three or four mornings a week, check on, checking on things, so that's proceeding as normal. At thirty-five O-Six Bradley Lane, uh, they've submitted a demolition building permit, it's been reviewed by the staff, we're waiting for Montgomery County to approve their plans, and the residence information meeting has been placed on hold by the applicant. At seventy-two oh-four Chestnut Street, the building permit expired on April third, and the applicant has applied for and received the extension of that building permit until July fourth, two thousand twenty. Uh, I believe that Niles just told me today that they have filed for variance for that, uh, rear setback on the north side of the house, and that'll be reviewed next week. And I, it's my understanding that Ron has received the right-of-way license agreement, uh, to be recorded as a, as land records. At seventy-two ten Chestnut Street, the county has closed the building permit, but they haven't closed the settlement control permit yet. And once that permit is closed, we will do a final inspection, and if everything is acceptable, the village building permit can be closed. Seventy-two hundred Dalefield Street, they have submitted a application for demolition and a new building, new house on that lot. Uh, the county is reviewing the plans, I've completed my initial review of the plans, and waiting for the applicant to address, uh, our comments and get approval from the county. We have not scheduled a meeting, uh, for the residents yet on that project either. Thirty-four twelve Taylor Street, uh, the building permit was extended, uh, last month, the contractor is expecting the final inspection approval from the county in the next couple of weeks, and if that goes well, then we will do a final inspection and hopefully close out that permit shortly.
Well, before they close out that, wait, wait, Doug, before we close out thirty-four twelve Taylor, I just want to make sure that the right-of-way is restored. I know that that's been an issue raised by the neighbor at thirty-four fourteen.
Yes, I spoke to the contractor last, the other day and told him that, uh, he's got to put some more plants in front of Bernice's house, and they're looking at replacing the trash can, so I, I've already told him that nothing's going to be released until the right-of-way is back into proper condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thirty-four seven Thorn Apple, their building permit will be expired in May, and we've contacted them, and they're putting together a request for an extension. They, uh, plan on having everything completed at that house sometime this summer. Uh, and that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Okay. Well, the good news is we heard back from State Highway on the letter that you helped draft, thank you for that. Um, I'm going to ask, you know, when, when some of the election stuff dies down, for you and Niles to keep following up with State Highways so that the, the things they promised us for Quincy intersection, Cummings intersection, Taylor intersection on Brookville, that those are attended to timely. Anybody else have anything else for Doug? Okay, thanks, Doug.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, now we, we're going to go into the action on emergency charter amendments and then the emergency ordinance, and I think, Ron, it might help if you give, um, a little bit of the, an overview on, you know, where we are with the governor's order. There are a couple of things that, you know, in the charter that are just direct conflicts, like you have to vote in person. Well, we, we can't, we're not having people, we're not giving people the opportunity to vote in person. And so maybe, um, you could give a, a little background on what's going on across the state, you know, and the other municipalities, and, uh, that's kind of where, what led to where we are with the amendments we're looking at tonight.
Sure, absolutely. This is Ron Bold speaking. So as everyone is aware, we are in an unprecedented situation, and the law does not expressly provide how we should handle an election during the pandemic. Last month, I drafted and the council adopted an emergency ordinance with respect to the election, and that was based on my recommendation to rely upon the public safety article of the Maryland Code, which provides that in a state of emergency declared by a local government, a local emergency plan can be, can be implemented to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So I was using that authority to adopt a plan for the election. Now, you know, that code provision in the public safety article is not definitive, frankly, it was written decades ago to apply more to tornado and hurricane flood type situations rather than virus pandemic. So there were some other attorneys in the state that were a little more concerned that they needed to amend their charters, and so the municipal attorney's group got together, I was part of the discussions, and the group then asked the governor to issue an executive order authorizing municipalities to amend their charters in an emergency situation to allow the elections to either be postponed or to be amended in terms of voting systems and the like, so that it could be conducted safely. But given that the governor has issued that executive order, giving us that authority, we need to exercise it. We need to exercise it in order to defend against a potential argument that we have violated or violated our charter by not conducting our election as our charter requires. And as Tiffany noted, there are provisions in the charter that we need to amend, including that polling places be used. Obviously, we can't use polling places under the social distancing requirements and the governor's stay-at-home order. You know, also notably, perhaps the most important thing to point out tonight about the emergency election plan that we drafted, we're imposing a voter registration deadline of May 8th, which is not currently in the charter, but we have to amend the charter to give us that authority to do it because right now voters can register up to the date of the election. Because we're going to be using ElectEx and doing a mail-only ballot process, we need to have a registration deadline so that we can make sure ballots are issued in time for them to be voted and returned and counted. So those are, you know, a couple of examples of why we have to amend the charter to accomplish the election under these emergency situations.
Ron, can I ask a question here?
Yeah.
Where, where does it say?
Well, it's up to the council.
Okay. Council, can I ask a question here, Ron? Because again, we're just looking at this document for the first time. But it, where does it say in, in the charter amendments, where is the registration deadline? I'm not finding it. Which paragraph is that in?
It's in the emergency plan for the election.
Now, that, that's not-
The committee did review.
Yeah, we, we did review and approve that, but that's not a need for a charter amendment. I don't see anything in the charter amendments that says anything about setting a registration deadline for the voter roll. So that, that's something we can handle.
Exactly. No, no, you're exactly right. The charter does not specify a deadline, therefore, there is no deadline.
Correct.
And current, the current practices allow people to register at the voting table on election day.
Yeah, I helped write them. My question is, why don't we handle that registration deadline the way we handle the other deadlines for the election, which is within the ordinance, not a charter change? I mean, I don't see any charter change that deals with registration. That's something that would belong in the ordinance, not the charter, correct?
It is in the ordinance. It's not in the charter.
Right. So, so there's, there's no need for a charter change on that ground. I do like the charter change you've added here.
We, we have to have, we have to have the charter change in order to authorize the ordinance change. So the charter amendment provides that, in a nutshell, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in the charter-
Yeah, I saw that generic narrative.
-that a state of emergency has been declared by the governor within the corporate limits of the village, the council is then authorized to pass an ordinance to implement an emergency election plan during that state of emergency.
Yeah, and I, I thought that was good.
So then the second step is for the council to then adopt the ordinance, which implements the emergency election plan for that year.
Yeah, I thought that might, which is good.
And the emergency election plan will then impose a registration deadline so we can make sure the mail-in ballot timing works out.
Right. I, I see that, and yeah, that, that's section G there on, on the charter amendment. I, I didn't have any questions about that. I thought that was a good overall, you know, in case of any future emergencies, that, that's a good change.
Okay. So can, Marty, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just bring you back to one of the concerns. So if I can get the council to look at the charter amendment, so resolution 2020-1. And, and one of the things that, that Marty raised is in, it's, I guess, the second paragraph under 602, elections. All elections shall be managed by the election committee or a qualified election service provider. We had to insert that since ElectEx doing our election this year.
That's right.
As determined by the council. And I think, Ron, your addition of as determined by the council was, since we're, we're entering into a contract and the, the financial and contracting responsibility falls on the council. Do you, you know, Marty was suggesting an insertion of, of the committee supervising. You know, I'm wondering if there's a, you know, a phrase we could bring there that, you know, or a qualified service provider, you know, coordinating with the committee.
Well, they would have to be supervised by the committee.
Well, Marty, I'm asking Ron, if you don't mind.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
The, in order to ensure that it was clear, the committee was doing the, the legwork with the contractor, but maintaining our responsibilities regarding contracting being that the council has to do that or the staff has to do that. So Ron, do you have a thought on that that you could provide on the fly?
Yeah. So, I mean, an option would be just to delete that underlining altogether and just leave it as is, all elections shall be managed by the election committee, period. I, we, we added the or a qualified election service provider to reflect that this year we have the authority to hire someone to help out with counting ballots through the mail. In the future, we may want that help as well, but the election committee would still manage that process. But, you know, so one option would be to strike that altogether, but that would, that would eliminate the ability to use a provider in a non-emergency situation. But if you want, if you want to reserve the right to use an election service provider in a non-emergency situation, it should stay in. But we could rewrite that sentence to say, you know, all elections, let's see, all elections shall be managed by election committee, period. A qualified election service provider may be retained by the council to assist with the election, something like that.
Okay.
And supervised by the election committee.
All right, Marty.
So I'm fine with the language you suggested, Ron. It preserves the, the manage by the, by, I mean, because the, the, the service provider's not going to manage the election. That's not what you're there for. They're there, they're there to, to implement the process if we, if we need that. So I like adding the fact that we may want a service provider as determined by the council because that will help underneath the, to provide the contract. So.
Yeah, I, I also, I, I agree with Todd that the statement, the added statement that you just made, Ron, to, to assist the committee works.
Susan, or Katya, I know we're doing this Zoom, so.
I agree as well. So add me in as a third.
Okay.
I don't, Susan seems to be.
Okay.
I've gone.
All right. Then, as we go through the other charter changes, you know, reverting to election rules and procedures, which again, the committee would draft as it has done in the past, under C. Ron, you made a, a comment earlier, qualified voters unable to vote in person, may vote by absentee ballot. How did you want to make that even clearer unless the election is-
A mail-in only election and then add is being conducted.
Okay. Or do you want to say-
Which, which paragraph?
It's under C. Ron, do you want to say, so it's section 602C, qualified voters unable to vote in person, may vote by absentee ballot unless the election is being conducted by mail-in? Or how, how did you fix it, Ron? I'm sorry.
Unless a mail-in only election and then add is being conducted.
Right. Good. Okay.
Is, is somebody, is somebody there? Tiffany, are you making me edit in?
Yeah, Niles is here, and I'm writing, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll print a new copy of it.
Okay, very.
And fixing the underline "any" was too far. And then there's the, the paragraph that was discussed earlier under G.
G, yes.
All right. So I think that covers the, the charter amendment. So do we have a council member who is making a motion to introduce the emergency charter amendment 2020-1 as amended?
Not just introduce, but also adopt.
Oh, that's right. Introduce and adopt as amended.
I, so I, I will introduce and, and-
Move to adopt.
And move to adopt.
Okay.
To adopt, yes.
Is there a second for introduction?
I will second that.
Okay. All voting in favor?
Aye.
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 Susan, are you there?
I think Susan dropped off, maybe?
I lost her for a second. Okay. Let me see if we can get her back. Hang on one second.
She didn't call the-
Yeah, while, while we're waiting, I'll just note that I do recommend that this be adopted tonight because we have to act on an emergency basis before our May deadline or upon it. And so the charter has to be amended before we reach those deadlines.
Okay. Yeah, if necessary, we'll call Susan. I, I just asked her if she is okay. She was on earlier. Maybe she just lost the signal.
Yeah.
Okay. So in order to move on, we've got four voting in favor, and can we amend the vote if Susan gets back on, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And then, you know, just a quick note on the ordinance and to address Marty's comment with respect to the uncodified language in the ordinance that provides if the election is uncontested, it would be canceled. Now, first, first I'll note that it's a non-issue now since we have a contested election. But I recommended that we include this so that if the election had been uncontested, we could cancel it and avoid the need to have any ballots. It is something that Garrett Park, Chevy Juice Village, Chevy Juice View, Section 3, Somerset, you know, all including as well because it, it appeared that, you know, in the small towns, if you have an uncontested election, it might be better not to have to handle the ballot during this COVID-19 pandemic. But, you know, that is uncodified language in the ordinance. It is not being added to the code, and it applies to this year's election only. And so again, it's a non-issue now that we have a contested election, and since it's not being codified, it's not the law going forward for any future election.
Right. Thank you for that. That's what I, that's how I read it, but it's good to hear your explanation.
Can I just jump in for one sec? This is something that the election committee talked about briefly a couple of years ago because it is efficient, and I'm an economist. I like efficiency. The, the issues that came up, and I'm summarizing here, were that it tends to, as a best practice, not quite meet the grade because it tends to encourage sort of old boys network on small village councils where the same folks just keep re-upping over and over again, and you can really get into a situation that's not terribly healthy in terms of local government when you have a uncontested election provision. And I know, I know, I see the benefit of it. As an economist, it's much more efficient. But I also think that we have a tradition here in Martin's additions now of really trying to do best practices. So again, like you said, Ron, it's a temporary measure. It's not in, in the code. But I would not, speaking personally, again, the committee has not reviewed this but or discussed it yet. But when we did discuss it back in the past, we thought, eh, probably not a best practice despite the efficiency.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Marty.
Hi, I'm here. I'm really sorry. My computer crashed.
Oh, that's not fun.
Sorry, Susan. So we'll just pause on the ordinance. Susan, we, I don't know when you crashed. We discussed the charter amendment. Ron made an edit to accommodate the concern that Marty raised about the committee's role with the contractor, and we voted to introduce and adopt, since we're working under an emergency basis, the charter amendment. The current vote count is four in favor and zero against. Do you wish to vote on the-
I would have voted four.
Okay.
That was what I was hoping had transpired.
And you're voting now. We'll take your vote now.
Yes.
Okay.
We confirmed that you could vote now when you got back on. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we're now on the ordinance number 2020-4-1. Ron gave a little bit more history on section 1.1 and the now moot point, the election, if the election shall be uncontested, which we have a contested election. So is there a council member that wants to move to introduce and adopt ordinance 2020-4-1?
I will move to introduce and adopt ordinance number 2020-4-1, a declaration of a state of emergency and ordinance to activate an emergency plan for the village's election.
Okay. And is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
We have six for and none against.
No. Five, Arthur, five. Don't, don't get us in trouble. Okay. And, and as part of that, we also have the emergency plan for the election of 2020, which will be, there are a couple of typos, just making it past tense. Ron, do you, can we make grammar changes or do you just want to leave it?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure what they are. Is there just a few that we go ahead and make right now?
Yeah, just under the nomination section, you made some of the past tense, so all nominated candidates submitted a statement of interest and qualifications under two. The election committee specified standard questions.
Well, no, I, I would actually leave that as is.
Okay.
Because, yeah, yeah, the rule is they may specify.
Okay.
So, you know, the, I know we're, we're splitting hairs, but-
It's not worth it.
If it's a rule. Okay.
Okay. So the ordinance has been introduced and adopted as well, and that, again, the emergency plan goes with it. All of this is on the website now. Niles is going to make sure that the links are up once it's all signed. The links up to the signed documents will also go up. Okay?
Right.
All right. Moving on to financial matters. Arthur.
Yeah. The, the main thing is that we got a, a note from the state comptroller that the large, I quoted it here, a very large reduction, 22% reduction of state tax withholding, a decline never seen before in the history of our state. Now, it turns out that that is less bad for the village than it appears because from what I understand, I don't actually get to see the details, but in talking to people in the comptroller's office, we do see the details. Village revenues come from the annual tax filings mainly rather than from state tax withholdings that are done on a regular basis from your salary. And the other thing that our, our, other place that our revenues come from is that the village income is from capital gains taxes. And this year, we will not have capital gains, we'll have capital losses, but they will not appear until after the residents file their tax returns next April. And that also is usually done with a delay. They ask for extensions so that we are not likely to see a major decline in village revenues for nine to 12 months. That is going to hit us, and it could hit us hard at that point. But for, you know, the foreseeable future, for the next nine months, I think we're okay. That's the main message that I get from the state comptroller's note.
Okay. Thanks, Arthur. There are a couple, or I sent you an email, and Niles has been getting up to speed. There are a few things that, you know, ElectEx and the contract that the council will be entering into, you know, that's an expense that was unforeseen. So we, we may need to make, you know, take another look at budget categories and amendments with, with ElectEx and a couple other things that have come up.
Right. We will be doing that in the next month.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then also just for the record and reminder that the fiscal year 2021 budget was included, the proposed budget and the proposed tax resolution, they were included- They were included in this month's meeting packet, so people would have another chance to see them. There will be a hearing, and they will be voted on at the May 7th meeting. So just trying to keep all of that on folks' front burners. Okay, thanks, Arthur, for the financial reports. Anybody have any questions for Arthur?
Can you all turn up the volume? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, we'll try and get a little closer. All right, Niles, you're up with the manager's report.
Certainly. So first of all, I'm just sort of still getting up to speed on things, so.
One month and four days. One month and four days.
No, it's one month today.
Whoa, there you go.
I started March 16th. So I'm getting up to speed still on some things. Thank you, everybody's patience, you know, talking to residents and getting all of that stuff. We have made some progress on a few different things. One is the GIS work. I received this week and installed the original draft of their data, which included the building or the setbacks, the trees, and things like that. There's still a couple of things that we need to go back to them on. One is the streetlights. And there's other little things that we're thinking, including the dog bag dispensers, to include on the map so that it's even more detailed and so that data is just there.
Before we get off, Katya, do you have streetlights that you could send to Niles? Or we could verify?
A map of streetlights?
Yes, we just need the updated map.
Yeah, I'll look through my files.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So there's a couple of things. Doug is going to, next week probably, come to the office just to look through the data as well, just in case there's anything I've missed. And we'll get back to them on that shortly. Then the financial control study. I had a conversation with Gray last week, and I gave him my feedback. He sent me some of the procedures document that looked pretty accurate, so it's good. I think we're good there.
They sent me an email today asking for three or four things, which I think that I have.
Yes.
If I don't, then I will come back to you. But it seemed like that might be the last of their-
Right, so there's that last thing. And then there's one other email that they sent literally yesterday for some things. I am going to send my response tomorrow. They already have a draft of their report, is what they've informed me. All of these things are the details that they want to make sure that it gets to the level that they are comfortable with.
Niles, did they give you any initial indications of how we're doing? Very high level?
Yes, so what they said, what Gray said specifically to me is that overall, we're doing very well. He was actually quite impressed for such a small community, what we've done. There's a few things here and there that they're going to recommend, but they thought we were actually overall in a good position. So I think that speaks well to what the village has done. And of course, now, it's, you know, part of my responsibilities is making sure that that continues, right? So that was actually really good news, and it was a really positive conversation. The cybersecurity RFP was awarded last month. The kickoff call is tomorrow, so we're going to go through some things there. And we're going to hopefully get up to speed on that fairly soon. And then the, so the next big contract that expires is the building permanent administrator. And that RFP was posted today and has a deadline of May 7th. But it was posted on our website. MML is going to post it. I checked a couple of hours ago, it was not up yet. And the-
State procurement.
The state procurement site is up there. And I searched building, you should be able to find it. So I did that as outside of it, so I found it.
And per our normal process, we'll make sure that that goes in the wrap-up tomorrow so that residents are also aware.
Tiffany, you're dropping out.
So as we normally do, we'll make residents aware that there's an RFP. It can be included in the wrap-up that goes out tomorrow.
Yeah. And so those were the main highlights. Also, we're continuing on with things, like we've been giving updates about trash and recycling. And I want to thank residents for, for, oh, yeah. Thank residents, sorry, I was checking something on the computer. I want to thank residents for them doing all that they could on that. Oh, and one last thing. Landscaping, they put in the community garden, the plants. There's still a couple more things to do there, and the Raymond dead end. So both of those things were done this week as well. So a lot of different things going on in the office, and I'm getting up to speed on a lot more.
And working with waste management-
Yes.
On their ever-evolving guidance.
Yes.
We actually had a better week this week. You know, it took a couple of weeks for folks to get into the groove. But trash and recycling pickups, hicups, pickup hiccups, whatever we're going to say, we're down this week significantly. Anybody have any questions for Niles?
Well, yeah, I just have, we introduced the budget last time. I guess we just have to note that it's up there for review. We don't act on it this month, I guess.
No, it's the May meeting that it will be.
Yeah, we had the layover time, Arthur, it's that 30-
Got it. Okay.
All right, thank you, Niles. Any other council members for Niles before we move on? Okay.
Thanks for working out that trash issue. A lot of people were really wild about it.
Well, I can understand that, and we'll continue to monitor it. I had a good conversation with the guys on the truck this morning, actually, which also led to some good, I think, some good conversations just about what's going on with some of the residents as well, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not always fun on their end.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Niles, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, ever since Arthur started speaking, it got really faint on the volume here.
Okay.
I haven't really been able to hear you all very clearly at all. I'm wondering if you could turn up the volume, please?
I'm trying to, I tried to, I saw your message, but let me see.
It just dropped off suddenly when Arthur started speaking.
Well, maybe on your end, Marty, we're all not-
You're all good?
Yeah, well-
Okay, and I, yeah. Okay, thank you. Just couldn't hear any of you, except very faint.
Okay, all right. And so now we're back to opportunity for council to hear resident comments.
No, I have one, which is to say thank you for amending that charter document to correct the misimpression that the council would be managing elections in the future. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thanks, Marty. I think, I don't know, it's Ollie and Susan? Anybody have anything else?
I don't have any major comments. It's really been informative, so thank you for inviting me and Niles. Welcome.
Thank you.
To do the new job, you did a great job, it seems.
Thank you very much, that is much appreciated.
Thanks for escorting me, everybody.
Niles has a little one, too. You guys can compare stories in person whenever you can see each other in person.
I have one reminder. There's a walkability meeting coming up next week. And Niles, you will be setting up the meeting on Zoom.
Yes, so I'll set up the meeting on Zoom. I know there was some conversation about the agenda for that meeting.
Yeah, we don't have, I'll see if I can put one together, okay?
All right, we can work it out, but I just wanted to throw that out, okay?
Okay, good. Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
All right, any other resident comments? Okay, hearing none. We will adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Yo!
Arthur's moving to adjourn. Susan seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No.
Eight thirty-four.
Niles, thanks for driving again. We appreciate your Zoom capabilities. Good night, guys, be safe.
Good night, thank you.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you all.
Good night.